June 6, 2017, regular scheduled board meeting, Swanee County Board of County Commissioners. Tonight, I've asked Dr. Alvin Jackson to open us with the indication and pledge if you'd stand.
Let us praise. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with Thanksgiving in our heart. We give you praise and we give you all our love. We give you reverence this evening. We're asking you to bless us in our deliberation of public policy. We're asking that everything that we do and that we say, every action, be a blessing for our people, for this great community. We're asking you to not withhold no good thing from those that walk upright. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, approval of minutes for the May 16, 2017, regular scheduled board meeting. Gentlemen, don't have any changes or anything that needs to be noted in the minutes? It wasn't. Hear none. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye. Moving on to consent agenda. Any items on here that any commissioner wants to pull for discussion? Hear none. I need a motion to approve, 2 through 9.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Moving on to proclamations and presentations. Adoption of a resolution declaring July 16 through the 22nd, 2017, pretrial probation and parole supervision week. Ms. Julie, how did you say your last name?
Eve Slade.
Eve Slade, District, or Circuit 3 Administrator.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and chairperson. Thank you for hearing this this evening. I am here to present a proclamation for your consideration to recognize pretrial probation and parole supervision week. But before I read that proclamation, I'd like to recognize the staff members from the Live Oak probation office that are with me here tonight, if that's okay with you all. I've got Terry Carlton, who is the office manager, Mr. Phil Corbett, who is a supervisor at the office, Mr. Jimmy Brown is a specialist. He supervises our sex offenders and high-risk offenders. I've got Ms. Vicki White here. She supervises our drug offender probation clients. And then we have Ms. Rebecca Raymond, and it looks like Ms. Crystal Reddick stepped out. Okay, but they were all here with us tonight, and they work here in the city of Live Oak, in Swanee County, as part of the probation office. The proclamation reads as such. "The proclamation by the Chairman of the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners to designate the week of July 16 through 22, 2017, is pretrial probation and parole supervision week. Whereas state and local community corrections employees fulfill their duty to protect the public 24 hours a day, every day of the year, by supervising those entrusted to their care, encouraging rehabilitation; and whereas community corrections professionals exemplify the values of trust, respect, accountability, integrity, and leadership; and whereas community corrections employees are trained professionals who provide services and referrals of offenders, promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy; and whereas community corrections professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, provide services, supports, and protection for victims; and whereas community corrections professionals are a true force of positive change in their communities; and therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners for Swanee County, Florida, in recognition of this event, hereby affirm the dedication of our local pretrial probation and parole officers and encourage all citizens to honor these professionals and to recognize their achievements during the week of July 16 through the 22, 2017, pretrial probation and parole supervision week." In addition to that, just a little bit of information on your local offenders on supervision. As of May 19, we had 768 on supervision in Swanee County. 398 of those had no prior contact with the system. 17 of them had previously been to prison. 193 of them had prior supervision, and 160 of them had been both in prison and on supervision before. In fiscal year 2015 and 16, the offenders completed 20,642.25 hours of community service here in Swanee County. We collected $120,671.43 in restitution for members of Swanee County, and we collected $171,395.08 in court costs and fines for Swanee County. So I just wanted to thank you all for taking this opportunity to consider my request.
Thank you. Thank you. Order to wishes of the board. Do I have a motion to approve?
No motion approved.
Second. Got a motion to approve resolution by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you all very much for coming out. Thank you all for what you do. Never worked in probation, but I've worked in corrections for eight years, so I know some of the headaches of the people you supervise, and I know some of the rewards that come with it as well. Thank you all. Anyone else have any further comments or anything? Thank you. Item 11, 12, and 13 are time-specific. Going to staff reports. Greg Scott, partner rec, and airport manager.
First, I'm giving out a prize tonight. Whoever can claim this phone and say that, yes, those are your pictures. You have it. Mr. Ford found it out in the parking lot, so. Randy, I got, we gotta talk.
I intentionally left mine in the truck.
Just to give you a quick update, I gave you some flyers from the summer programs. There are also some out in the front for the audience. Talks about our day camp, swim team, swim lessons, tennis camps, and that sort of thing for the summer. We've got seven all-star teams going to different all-star tournaments this year. And we've got a commercial league, started church, I'm sorry, sort of church league this year. We shift to a commercial league for adult softball, so we've got that underway now also. We did some repairs out at Little River Springs, some with help of March guys, to do some overlook, redo the overlook along the river. That's phase one of the repairs. We doing some more repairs next offseason also. We've had some issues out at Peacock Lake. The water is really low, so we tried to leave it open as long as we could for kayak and canoes. People are walking and then around the edges with four-wheelers and golf carts and that kind of things. We're trying to get a handle on that. So if you hear some complaints, we're actively trying to get control of that. So just want to let you be aware of that in case you were, had any calls. Did some setups for different community events, May Day and also the Blueberry Festival. Our guys hauling tables and tents and that sort of thing for those sort of things. Another activity in the summer that, the springs are really getting busy. And at some point, we need a discussion about those, how to control those. We're working with game officials and also Sheriff's Office to try to control as much behavior as we can. But folks know whenever those folks leave that it's okay again. So need to be aware of that, and at some point, we need to have a discussion about staffing that appropriately, so we can look at maybe making it more family-friendly. But it's that time of year, and it's wide open, and, but we'll discuss that some at budget time. Also with the recent rains, it is mowing season. I don't know if you might do that at their house, but certainly at the 300-plus acres we take care of, it is time to mow and mow a lot of it. So guys been busy doing that, and got a little short staff right now, but we're trying to catch up on that. On the airport, we've got the approved, let's go out for the bids for the apron expansion. And also, we've got the design phase, JED-A. So busy everywhere, but that's the way we like it. So any questions? Be glad to answer any questions in the audience or the commission.
The summer program that's there at the elementary school, does that kick off next week?
Yes, starts next week.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question for him. Mr. Scott, thank you for all you do, county. You take care of a lot of stuff. And you're always there whenever I need to talk to you about something, so I really appreciate it. I will ask you this question about the last conversation that we had on the phone involving signage out at Little River Springs.
Right.
Were you able to get that?
We're in the process of developing those, yes.
Good. Thank you.
Just so that y'all are aware, we had a tally out at the springs, and we want to try to make people aware as possible of the current and such. So some folks are just not aware of the dangers of rivers and springs and rocks and current, so.
Especially given that spring, as it flows out into the river, and whatever it does, it tries to trap people up underneath that ledge, so.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't gonna say anything, but Scott, I want to thank you again for that. Heard you mention about the May Day celebration, and to follow it up on that Sunday, you came through, you saw the people that was out there. There were 500 to 700 people this time that Sunday.
There's cars everywhere.
There were cars everywhere. And I think it was a very good event. I think everybody enjoying themselves.
Appreciate that. And the guys, you know, we enjoy, knowing that people enjoy what we do. So just ride by and see them. I'm gonna have them, they can get their pallets up that high in the air, but that's. Thank you.
Thank you.
I still got a phone.
Catherine Allen from our extension office. Would like to take a few minutes.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I was really excited about coming up and letting you know the process, or where we are in the process for the hiring, in that we had FCS, the Family and Consumer Science. Kathy Rogers retired, and we were able to hire Kim Griffin, who is a registered dietitian. She has her master's degree in food and nutrition, and she'll be starting June 30th. So very excited about that. We also hired Dee Broton. She's a local gal for our ag position. This is a commercial crop, or position, which is vegetables and agronomic row crops. So she'll be starting June 19th. And we have a third person, our 4-H agent, and Dee's position was the new one, so we're excited about that. And then the third was the 4-H position, in which you knew Brian Estevez, he transferred over to Escambia County. And we hired Derby Sale, and he will be starting July 17th. And he comes from Virginia. He has experience, some experience, he has the camping side of 4-H in terms of experience, but background in education as well as theater, and he has a master's degree as well. So we're getting some really well-qualified candidates that have been applying. That being said, as many of you have been following the state budget, know the governor vetoed the state funding for 4-H. So at this point, what's happening is, and this is my role, I'm not advocating, you know, action or anything like that. I'm just letting you know what this means in terms of the vetoes. So as of today, all of the positions across the state in every program area, whether it's 4-H, ag, FCS, has been frozen. I don't know what this means for state events. You know, this summer is busy for us. It has legislature. It has 4-H University. We have Camp Cherry Lake coming up. So we are kind of in a wait-and-see. You know, legislature goes back for the special session. I don't know what's gonna happen. You know, they could override it. I don't, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a crystal ball person, but that doesn't look like that's happening. So there's gonna be some belt tightening. There's gonna be some reductions in staffing overall, and there will be a freeze. And that looks like, at least with the amount of money that they have, that has been vetoed for that state funding, that it'll probably extend for, throughout the year into next year. So, good news for us here in Swanee County is we got everyone signed before this morning, which is when the freeze went into effect. So at this point, our positions, they're, they're in the process. But again, that's what we know as of this point. So keep your fingers crossed. And if there's more information that I can provide to you, I'll let you know as soon as I have it. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, at 6:16, we can move back up to item number 11. At 6:15, or as soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special permit for temporary use requests by American Promotional Events, DBA, TNT Fireworks, to be granted a special permit for the temporary use under Section 1410 Swanee County Land Development Regulations. I'll turn our attention to Ron Meeks, planning and zoning. Go back up. Turn our attention to county attorney for swearing in.
I'll do that first. Everybody that, if you anticipate that you may give testimony in either or any of the three public hearings that'll be items 11, 12, and 13, would you all stand to be sworn, please? Right? G2, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God? Okay, just realize that if you don't participate in the first hearing, the oath will carry over to the next numbered agenda item, okay? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman and board members, the first application that you have before you tonight is a request for a special permit for temporary use. The Land Development Regulations allows the Board of County Commissioners to issue a temporary use permit for the utilization of land in a manner not inconsistent with the district zoning regulations. The zoning regulations, under the allowable uses for commercial intensive, which is where this property is located, allows for a wide range of retail sales. The request that is made, as part of this application, is a temporary use permit by TNT Fireworks to hold a firework tent sale starting June 15, 2017, and ending on July the 4, 2017. The request was first heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the May 30, 2017, meeting, and was recommended for approval. The site plan shows the proposed location and layout of the parking area that the tent sale is proposed to be conducted on. And that the first site would be the area that is located in the front portion of the Walmart area. They previously held sales in this location for approximately 15 years. This is general site. The applicant has a pending application that was submitted to the Swanee County Fire Marshal for their review. If the board so chooses to approve the request, then that application would have to be approved by the Fire Marshal, and then they do an inspection to ensure the distance of their setbacks for their generators and stuff that they have on site. You have a proposed resolution as part of your packet for the approval. The applicant has submitted a narrative which kind of outlines some of the criteria in granting any special permit, in this case, a temporary use permit. They show their hours of operation would be 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Dealing with the event setup, trash disposal, and sanitary facilities would be in the Walmart parking lot. The tent would be set in the parking lot in a double-road parking spacers in such a way that will not impede the normal traffic flow to the shopping center. Entrants and exits will be existing from where the parking lot accesses, the roads, the county roads, and State Road 129. The event will not impede ingress and egress to the property. Lights and cash registers will be powered by a portable generator located in the required distance away from the tent, as per the local Fire Marshal guidelines, and I believe all that stuff has to be at least 20 foot away for the safety. Signs will be placed on the tent itself, in the windows of the tent, and approximate road signs will be placed around the shopping center. The existing land use on the property is commercial in nature, which allows for the use of sale of retail in this general area. They've also stated here that the event will have zero additional impact on the surrounding neighborhood and streets, as it is relatively the extension to the primary function of the current use of being general or commercial intensive. Patrons will be allowed to use the restroom facilities at Walmart facility, and then the operators of the event will be required to accommodate for the trash that is, or refuse that would be created as part of this event. At this time, I would enter the file into the record. You don't have any questions with me.
Mr. Meeks, I'll take the file in as composite exhibit number one. Thank you.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Hear none. At this time, I'll open the floor for public comment.
Yes, ma'am. When you approach, would you please state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am?
My name's Mindy White, and I live at 12772 162nd Terrace in McAlpin, in Zips 32062. I just want to let you know that me and my husband have been running the tent for the last four years. Never had any complaints or problems. We're not entirely sure how it came about, where we had to kind of go through this route to get the temporary permit, but we'd definitely like to continue to do it. And we knew the guy that had it prior to us, and, but if you have any questions about it, I'd, you know, I'll answer them if you have any.
Anyone have any questions for?
I do have a question for, just for the board, though. The, this is all basically the fallout from some changes that we made involving tent sales. Is that correct over the last couple of months, or is this something that's changed before then?
No, sir. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'll respond to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. There weren't really any changes made to the ordinance, you know, as it was done. What had happened was, we had kind of just had a blip there, under the tent sales, and what was allowable underneath there, and we had some confusion in the office. And so we're now going back and just straightened it out, so that we can walk through each of these things. In the past four years, it should have been falling under this particular division rather than another division, and that's why you're up here now, to be able to march through and do it appropriately. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Hear none. At this time, I'll close public comment. Any board discussion?
I have one, one comment.
Yes, sir.
The location for, for the next one also looks to be the same as the first one. Are these sharing the tent, or? Because the locations exactly the same, the two.
Well, it's not the same, it's not the same location. I mean, I think they, on the second application, they used a general vicinity map for.
Because it looks almost identical to the first.
It does.
Well, I mean, I would, I don't know if I could speak to that if the other, the other hearing's not open. Okay.
Well, speak to the first one first.
The location of this one would be in front of Walmart. The location of the second one would be the north end of that other parking lot, which would be near Subway.
So this is, this one's going where it normally is at every year, correct?
And the other one goes where it normally is as well. There's always two that are there. There, there's actually a property line division of where Walmart ends and the storefronts start for the other.
Okay. They just look like they're about in the same spot to me.
They are about the same, but not quite the same.
It's basically one's on the south parking lot, one's on the north parking lot.
I'm just looking here. I may be looking at it wrong, but it says here, June 25 through July 4. And over here, it says June 15 and the July 4.
Well, there are two separate requests, two separate owners. The first owner has requested the June 15 through July 4. The second request was to start their sale June 25 through July 4.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. You said that it was the, a different owner. The application is identical, with the exception of, in fact, on number 11 and 12, the application for zoning special permit is identical. 25th through July 4.
Right.
25th through July 4.
They both say Mr. Goff.
Yeah, both of them are Kenneth Goff.
That one should be, should be the second one.
It's the first and the second.
And I think that's the reason why your picture shows the spot in the same place duplicated.
They are, they are two separate applications. I don't know where.
Yeah, and that's what got me, too. Thinking we fixed.
In the packet, it's correct. The copy that may have been copied may not be correct.
So it looks like it's just a copy problem. The digital portion is correct?
Except for the overlay.
I got you.
The overlay. It falls in the same spot. I mean, I realize that it's, you know, to the north, but that one overlay is the same for each. Instead of it being, in your packet, it's correct.
Any further discussion?
But there are two different dates, so remember now, I think we're only considering the one that had, the first one is from the 15th through the 4th, for the first one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the application.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five with zero. It's time we'll close public hearing and go into our next public hearing at 6:15 or as soon as the matter can be heard. Hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special permit for temporary use requests for Family Fund Fireworks to be granted for a special permit for temporary use under Section 1410 Swanee County Land Development Regulations. If you were sworn in at the last one, you'll be sworn in for this one, and turn our attention now to Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman and board members, this is the second request for the special permit for temporary use. As I'd previously stated in the previous application, the location of this site would be on the north side of a large parking lot there. This, this site location will be more in front of the subway area. This also is a temporary use request. The starting time for this special use permit would be June 25, 2017, running through July 4, 2017. As with the previous applicant, this applicant has held their event at this location in years past and is requesting to do the same. This would be a temporary use permit. The zoning on this portion of the property is also in the same zoning district, which is consistent with retail sales in the zoning district. This application was first heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the May 30 meeting and was recommended for approval to the Board of County Commissioners at that time. You do have a resolution for this application as well that is written for approval. If there are any changes to that, then we would notate those later on. As with the previous application, ingress and egress would be off US 129. Off-street parking exists in the tent parking areas. Refuge areas be provided for on-site. Any power that's needed associated with the tent sales will be serviced by a generator. There are no buffers or anything like that's required in this area for this use being temporary. You would have temporary signage located on-site. Required setbacks that would be for any structure is being met. The LDRs do require special permits and allow them to be issued by the Board of County Commissioners under a temporary fashion. As I previously stated before, this application, this applicant also has a pending application with the Fire Marshal, that if the board does choose to approve this request, that application would have to be approved by the Fire Marshal and inspections completed prior to their opening and starting their tent sales. We see no impact upon schools, utilities, or streets in the area, no impact upon the neighborhood. The established land use is commercial. No impact upon living condit- The established land use is commercial, no impact upon living conditions, or traffic, or drainage, no impact upon air or light, no known impact upon property values, would not have any impact on, you know, future development of others' properties. And the timeframe is temporary and seasonal. You would typically probably, with both of these applications, probably around first of the year, have another application, because I do believe they hold these events twice per year, in July and January. So you may have these applicants come back before the board at a later date as well. At this time, I would enter the file into the record, and you have a resolution written for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. I'll accept the file as composite exhibit one.
Thank you. Do we have any board questions for staff? Here none at this time, I'll open the floor to public comment. If you would, just step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kenneth Goff. I live in Valdosta, Georgia, 3948 Apple Cross Road. Mr. Chairman and gentlemen of the board, I appreciate you taking the opportunity to hear me tonight. As Mr. Meek so eloquently put it, there's not a lot I can add, but there is a couple of things I wanted to make for clarification. I know there's, there are two different date period of times, and that may be confusing. And just to put it very simply put, you sell in fireworks, everything you're going to sell, you're going to sell on the 3rd and 4th of July, but you have to be open so that people know you're going to be there. But personally, I don't like to make my people sit out there an entire week under 100-degree weather for no purpose. That's the reason we open up generally around the 24th rather than on the 14th, because it's hot out there. So that, that's the discrepancy, or not discrepancy, but that's the difference, the reason there's difference of time periods. We open generally our locations, we run 60 locations here in Florida and about 15 or so in Georgia, but we generally open up around the 24th, and just because of the longevity of being out in the hot weather and that type of thing. We've been in this location for the last seven years, twice a year for July and New Year, so we've been, in a sense, 14 seasons we've been here doing that. The local Brad Scarborough, the middle school coach, he's, they run it for us and has done a great job. We make sure the trash is cleaned up, everything's taken care of. And again, just for clarification purposes, we are in front of the subway where our friends are in front of, I say our friends, our colleagues are in front of the Walmart, so we're, there's a good distance amongst us. And again, the question may in fact arise, well, why do you need two fireworks tents? Well, that's a good question. Personally, I don't like Big Mac. I like Whoppers. And you may like the mushroom and Swiss from Hardee's. So you, we give, we give an option, we give, and that's with democracy and free enterprise, you know, that's what we're based on, competition, et cetera. And so by us providing another choice, Black Cat Fireworks is the brand that we sell, and I think it's a good thing for people to have that choice. And we respectfully and request the fact that we would be approved to continue our sale, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, gentlemen, if you have any of those.
Anybody from the board have any question for him?
No.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none at this time, we'll close public comment.
Any board having discussion on this matter?
Have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Sessions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Passes five with zero. This time, we'll close this public hearing. Move on to our next public hearing. All right, at 6:15, or soon as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing, which is the third public hearing in addition to the previous two public hearings, to consider and act out of an ordinance adopting Florida-friendly use of fertilizer on urban landscape. This time, we'll turn our attention to the county attorney, Jimmy Privat.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We've been through this proceeding twice now in previous public hearings, of which we've received actually not any comments from the public, but we had some concerns from commissioners about the various language, and they wanted to understand it a little bit better and understand the effect that it may have upon the residents of the county. Well, I think, you know, we've gone through and resolved those. I sent emails to each of you, you know, for your comments, and I've received back comments, and I hope that I've answered those particular questions, you know, as we move forward. With this ordinance, we are required by the legislature now to adopt the ordinance in its minimum fashion like we've, like we have by July 1st of this year. We've kept it to the minimum, just because we want the minimum. My comment to all of this is that there are a number of items that can be confusing. One is whether or not, you know, it applies to, a farm says they are defined under the right to Florida Farm Act, Right to Farm Act, and those farms are all exempted. There are another, other, a number of other items that, you know, are exempted, and, you know, we move forward from there. There are a lot of little things that appear to be complicating because they involve Florida administrative code sections, and the administrative code sections deal basically with labeling of chemicals. And the labels define how you're to use them in a maximum, you know, capacity that, and still be legal in Florida, and that's what this is mainly, you know, about. IFES has worked for a number of years to be able to set guidelines for what is appropriate for fertilization practices in plants, and those are the guidelines that are recommended to be adopted, you know, by the legislature and that we will adopt in this particular program. There's really nothing exciting or different about this, other than we're required to do it. Having said that, if you have any other specific questions that I haven't addressed for you already, I'd be happy to address them.
All right. This time, does the board have any questions with the county attorney or Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson.
Just would like to say that, and reiterate the fact that I do not believe that it is in the best interest of the county to adopt resolution, or adopt ordinances that are not going to be enforced, as we spoke about before. But after having spoken with counsel for, about this, at probably ad nauseam to him, the language in the state, State's Right to Farm Act is still vague and makes it, as in his opinion, and I hope that I'm not speaking out of turn, Mr. Privat, difficult to enforce without the additional language clarifying it either from the courts or from the state.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that puts a stronger burden on the county later to, if they ever decide they want to enforce this, because it's a, it's required by the state, kind of backed into a little corner. So I don't know if that says everything that I want to say, but...
Well, I personally think it's written the way it is, because we don't want to enforce it. I mean, but we have to pass it, so I'm satisfied with it in the manner that it is, other than the fact, and you may have made the change, but...
Yes, sir. I will note that, and when I was speaking with the Commissioner Sessions just a little bit earlier, there are a few little minor tweaks, like you're fixing to address, that we had seen for Scrivener's errors to be changed in there, and I noticed that the copy that y'all have don't have those little tweaks. So if you go to, when you do make a motion to approve it, that you would, you know, put in there that, including the Scrivener's error that I have corrected.
Yeah, because I only had one change that I talked to you about, and I'll just read it into the record on the part where it says, whereas Swanee County Board of County Commissioners has determined that the use of fertilizers on lands within Swanee County creates a risk. Me personally, it's not the use, it's the misuse. And I wanted that little bit of a change in there.
Yes, sir.
At this time, if there's nothing else from the board, we'll open it up, open the floor to public comment concerns. Anyone wishing to speak, come to the podium, state your name, address for the record. If you weren't sworn in at the last one, at this time, I'd ask you to be sworn in.
You were sworn? Okay. You swear from the testimony that you gave before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right. State your name and address, please, sir.
Glen Clark, 278 52, 23rd Place, Frankfurt. The only comment I want to make about this, I don't have a problem with what the board's trying to do. I have a problem with the state. They threw this out here, and there don't seem to be any plan behind it. Looks like a backdoor attempt to do something, but you, they requiring you do it mandatory, pass this resolution, so we got to do it. So what, I don't understand what their problem, purpose is. That's, this seems like a backdoor attempt at bullying with no, is it window dressing? That's the only thing I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for comment? Seeing none at this time, we'll close public comment. Board discussion, anything that y'all want to address further?
Just, I'll just make a comment that we're primarily an agricultural county and that farmers are the original conservationists, and that no farmer's going to put another 100 pounds of fertilizer on something if he doesn't have to, because it costs more. And we also, you know, depend on the waterways and the aquifer that we have, and the abundance of water that we actually have here in Swanee County, and we all, as farmers, are going to protect that in the best way we can. And it's one of these things where I don't necessarily agree with having to have to do something like this, but since it's mandated, we'll, we will say we did it and move forward.
I'd just like to say, I believe it's probably some type of a stepping stone as well. I mentioned that earlier in one of the other meetings, but it's mandated. I appreciate what Mr. Privat has done and the rest of the board to try to protect Swanee County, and again, I just recognize we have to do something, but I appreciate what we've done to try to protect the county, so...
Any further discussion on this? All right. Scared to ask, but they'll have a motion?
Before we have a motion, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, just.
I've seen other ordinances in different counties. This ordinance may pass in other counties, and this probably would be a good question for Mr. Privat. In order for us, if we, if in the future, the county ever decided they want to enforce something, there would have to be passed a fines, everything that goes along with this. I cite Marion Counties as an example, because they have put everything in place in addition to this, to be able to enforce all that. So there still has to be more put in before we can even enforce this, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We'd have to make amendments to it, the enforcement amendments.
Like I said, this was the minimum that was required.
And that being said, whether we approve it or not, future boards can come in and adopt it.
Adopt it.
You know, upon two public hearings and put whatever they want in place.
As well as the state.
I think by having the minimum there, at least we're, we're, we're doing something we have to, but we're setting the precedent by going ahead and saying this is what we want to see and how we want to see it done. Any further discussion, any more questions? Most wishes of the board.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
With the amendments, I mean, with the Scrivener's errors.
With the Scrivener's errors.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I think for symbolic purposes, you should send a photo to the legislature of all of you holding your nose while you vote.
Yeah. After, after our trip up there with the Senator and our representative, I think they know our feelings on it.
Yeah, they do.
At least our two representatives do. We spoke to them in length on it, but I don't see no changes coming down the, down the road from Tallahassee. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Mr. Richardson. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion reluctantly carries five with zero.
Reluctantly.
Close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would beg Mr. Privat's assistance in now trying to put a stop to the human fertilizer that's coming from Valdosta down the Swanee River, since we now have an ordinance in place, so maybe we can pursue that, because I'm sure that they're overdosing us on that.
As we speak, probably.
Oh, yeah, well, this rain we just had.
We just got. We had spearheaded a while back a letter through some surrounding counties. Has that, do you know where we're at on that? I know we had adopted it and sent it on, I think some other ones were...
I heard all seven.
Well, we had already sent.
Yeah. I think all seven have sent a letter.
Two months ago.
Yeah, yeah, I know we did. I just didn't know if the other counties had joined this or not.
I'm sure they did. I saw copies of some of them, but I don't know all of them.
For jurisdictional purposes, they all went to DEP, and that's who's going to be dealing with it, if you want to call it that.
I do have copies of their resolutions. Some of the other ones have emailed them, and I'll be glad to email them to you guys.
Moving on to general business, item 15, discuss possible board action. A special category is historical grant application by the Swanee County Historical Commission. Eric Musco, Historical Commission Chairman.
Good afternoon, and I am taking off my deputy clerk's hat. I am now here just as the Historical Commission Chairman. You have before you in your agenda pack the information that I provided to you last week. I've since provided some more information before the meeting with some updated engineering specs and information. But basically, the gist of it is, we on the Historical Commission own the, the old ACL freight station where the museum is located. It's over 100 years old, well over 100 years old. It's got lots of maintenance needs, to put it mildly. There is a grant that we found out about through Joe Skierski, a state special categories historic grant that opened on May 15th and it closes on June 15th, so they didn't give us a lot of time to work on this. The Historical Commission went forward with it. We hired a grant writer to work on this with us. An architect came in, reviewed the place, and basically gave us an estimate of about $440,000 to replace the roof, basically fix the envelope, as he called it, of the building to seal the weather from outside so the museum objects could be okay. So we have provided the information to you. We are a ready county, which means we only have to provide 10% of that as a match if it is awarded to us, and so that's about $44,000. So basically, because of the time crunch, we are looking to the county to basically write a letter stating that they would be willing to provide either in cash and/or in-kind services that $44,000 match. Now that I've talked to the city, Mr. Williams at the city, and he is willing to go before the city council and the CRA to request funding for if and when the application is approved. It will not take place until fiscal year 1819. So basically, this is just something we need for the application, do by June 15th, stating, yes, we are supporting this project, we would like to help fund our 10% of the grant. So with that, I have questions. I'd answer them for you.
Any questions? Mr. Board?
My question, Mr. Chairman, would be involving budgeting. Where would we, as a county, if we did adopt this? I can know we can bring in probably, probably some in-kind services, but could we do it all with in-kind services?
I believe tonight, he's just asking us for a, a letter of commitment, basically is what you're asking for.
Right. Well, the way we have actually checked, because I asked about that question also, out of that 10% match, at least 25% has to be cash. Now then, in talking with the grant writer, she said there's probably about $15,000 of that, and that could be used for in-kind services. And... And basically, tearing off the old roofing, that kind of thing, she says about $15,000 worth, so that leaves 30,000 in cash, basically, that we would need.
And you said that was for the year eighteen nineteen?
Eighteen nineteen, state fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
So upon knowing that they were approval, we would just, it would be figured into our budget, next budget workshop.
And again, I've talked to the city, and that sounds like they're willing to do it also, to put in some money. It's just like the time crunch, June fifteenth, they were not gonna have a meeting in time for us to get everything in.
Yeah, tonight, we're not having to pick a source of revenue or say where it could come from. I don't believe, I just believe from my understanding, it's just, yeah, we're willing to put forth the money if they're awarded the grant.
Yes, if they're awarded the grant.
With that said, I understand that, but we're still making a commitment that we would fund it. So that's why, that's why I believe that's a question that ought to be asked.
Please in consideration, future.
Yeah, this? This isn't the first grant that the Historical Commission has gone after that's been backed by the board, is it?
It's been several years, it's been probably 10 years since the last one we went for, but yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was kind of the reason behind developing the Historical Commission is for their ability to be able to go out for grants behalf of this building.
Right. There's been grants, I mean, to be able to make it where the museum could be inside of it, that took a lot of renovations and.
Right, so I mean, it's an ongoing relationship between the county and the city that's, it's not, this isn't a new.
No.
Procedure, this is the way we've done it in the past, and it has seemed to work in preserving the building for over the years, so.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with those. I don't know, does he need a vote, would we need a vote on it? Y'all?
I believe, probably would.
I'm asking the attorney.
Yes, I'm shaking my head. If you can't hear it rattle.
They were looking directly at you.
You can't hear it rattle, I'm shaking my head.
I didn't know if he just needed a consensus of the board, or you need approval. I'm fine with it.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions, second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just one question, and Mr. Musgrove can address it. There's a lot of costs in addition to this on the interior. At what point do the, does the Historical Commission?
That'd be a future, right down the road. Get this one done first.
Obviously, I know, I'm just wondering how far down the road.
And we can probably cut from that one, if the main one, the building sealed.
All right, moving on to item sixteen, appointment to the value adjustment board. This year, I've asked Commissioner Fleming to remain on the board, myself, and one member that needed to be replaced, and I have asked Mr. Don Hale to fill that position. The two citizen members that are on behalf of the board, Ms. Betty Bricewell and Mr. Bo Hancock, have both agreed to stay on, so that'll be the board's portion of the 2017 value adjustment board. Commissioner Fleming, Mr. Gamble, Commissioner Hale, citizen member, Mr. Hancock, Ms. Bricewell. Moving on to item number seventeen, we had a couple additional agenda items, they came up at the last minute, I saw they were important enough to put on the agenda, asked that they be placed on the website, I believe they made it on there, being indicated that they did. So the first one is approval payment of, to Kind of Services LLC for the pavement of the courthouse parking lot. This is partial payment, payment based, based on percentage of completion. At this time, we'll turn our attention to Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the judges had said that they're going to pay a cost up to a limit that we had established and considered in a previous meeting by the board, but they're not accustomed to paying on, based on a percentage of completion like we are with construction. So we sent the invoice over, and it's been held, actually sent back to us. So I'm just asking that we go ahead and pay the invoice based on what's already been done, we'll continue to pay, and then just be reimbursed by the judges when we're finished. We'll use our contingency, the board's contingency fund for this purpose to be reimbursed.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Who's that? Got a second by Commissioner Hale. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor? All opposed, same sign. Our second item was approval of satisfaction of a mortgage, release of lien of Gabrielle Croft client. Turn our attention to Jimmy Pravat, County Attorney.
Thank you, gentlemen. This is more of just an administrative cleanup item. Mr. Croft had worked through the ship program a number of years ago, and had, under the differing aspect of how the ship program was operated back at that time, in, in 2010, the, and had gone through all the program, and had repaid all of the funds that he was required to do. And for whatever reason, our partner in this thing, the Swanee River Economic Council, did not have the appropriate documents done at, at the time. Fortunately, it's now come back up again, and it's simply a matter of execution, the satisfaction of mortgage that should have been done ten, seven years ago, in 2010.
All right, any questions? Any questions on this end? Wishes of the board? Got a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sessions. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Moving on to item eighteen, public concerns and comments. First one I have here is Mr. Jim Ward. Says here, Mr. Ward's bringing us a check to present. How you doing, sir?
There's a story with how it came to be in my possession. No, it's a photo of the USS Swanee. I didn't know what year it was, but Mr. Sessions, as well as Mr. Musgrove, have now told me that it is an old picture of USS Swanee. It's the, one of the earlier ships from the First World War, steamship. Isn't that what you said, Eric? I'm probably gonna present this to Eric for the Historical Society. But how it came to be in my possession, you, oh, yes, thank you. Jim Ward, 274 76 Frankfurt. Anyone from the probation and parole commission still here?
Yeah.
I don't know if you knew the gentleman, Mr. Perry Holmes, used to be the probation officer here, I'm sure some of you fellows remember Mr. Holmes. In seventy-two, I got put on probation. A year later, he ordered me to central Florida, down in Fort Meade area in Polk County, where my people are from. The next year, I met a, two sisters from Piggott, Arkansas, that moved into town. They were actually under witness protection program, I believe, but that's another story. Their name was, their names was Mary and Donna. Donna was the older sister. Few years later, their mother moved to Sarasota. We all became and remained friends. Before their mother passed away twenty some odd years ago, she told the girls that Donna, the oldest one, that didn't have the same biological father. And her father was a developer in Clearwater, Florida, and his name was Harry D. Wilson. And he was in the Army Air Corps in the forties. Mr. Wilson has recently passed away. The younger sister, Mary, actually had been living with him for the past few years, taking care of him, as her older sister, the actual biological daughter of Mr. Wilson, they had had a fallen out. So the younger sister had been living with him for a few years, taking care of the old gentleman there in Clearwater. This picture was a picture of hers, she didn't think it is of the USS Swanee, homecoming of troops, number three, photo by Sergeant in Columbia, South Carolina. She didn't think it was of him, and now I know it's not, so the age is wrong, she thought it was actually Mr. Wilson's father's picture. Now whether he was on it as a, as a troop, or as a member of the crew, I wouldn't know, but it had to have been the father's picture. It's something that this elderly, wealthy man kept up with his entire life, and when he passed, it was there in his home. And she's trying to decide what to do with some of the stuff, and she had been in contact with me, and I had sent my wife down to meet her, because that's what a man does when no girlfriends are calling up, you know, you send your wife down. If you're smart. I'm hoping I was smart. Anyway, my wife, Benita, went down a few weeks ago, when she was down at her mom's in Mulberry's, and this came home with. And as I said, it's a picture of the USS Swanee, if you can't see it, anyone wants to, to Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Appreciate it, Mr. Ward. Thanks for the picture and the humorous story.
Sure thing, and.
And the entertainment.
And the entertainment, yes. Well, here's some more entertainment. Mary, the lady that actually provided this, is a music person, and she has been wanting for a long time to come up to the Spirit of the Swanee for a music festival, and she can't afford it, because this was not her biological father, it was her sister's that doesn't get along with. It would be so nice if somebody could comp her a ticket to some function down at the Spirit of the Swanee. Any volunteers? Well, I think it would be nice.
I believe we can work on that.
Yeah, we can handle that.
That would really make her day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening. My name is Jason Pennington, and I'm representing Constitutional Leadership Schools. And I'm here basically just to introduce to you guys that we are looking to open a tuition-free charter school. It'd be a military-style school here in Live Oak in August of 2018. It'd be middle school grades for a number of years, and then we'll expand it to high school. It'll be a day school, not a boarding school, so we can send the children away at the end of the day. But the students and staff will all be in, wearing a uniform, and they will be marching. People will, we are, our primary location is the old Badcock Building, across from Melody Church. I just talked to their president today about it. So things are looking good for us to acquire that. And said, we will be opening August 2018. The school will be a little bit different in, aside from the military part, in that our grading schedule, our grading scale will be a little bit more stringent for the students. We will be teaching the same basic courses that the middle school teaches, because we're required to by state, but we are adding cursive writing to the sixth graders, we're also adding home economics to the sixth graders. Eighth grade will have a whole semester on the Constitution. Our idea, or our goal, is to instill leadership values and patriotism in all of our students. We feel this is really needed, not specifically Swanee County, but we have to start somewhere, but with mainly public school students everywhere, really. So that's pretty much the gist of what I wanted to hear tonight, but if you have any questions, I might answer.
Y'all have any questions for him?
Thank you.
Here none, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else for public comment? Here none, we'll move on to nineteen, administrators' comment and information. You got anything for us, Mr. Harris?
We've got about two hours worth, but I'm gonna try to condense that down some. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have an interesting situation that occurred the other day that was brought to my attention from Mr. Johns, that handles our shop out there at the Road Park. For many years, we've had an excellent, enjoyed an excellent relationship with Sarasota County when it comes to surplusing their equipment. You know that we've bought many, many equipment down there, used heavy equipment, lots of pickup trucks, and other things that our departments have been able to put into use, and just has saved us a lot of money. They have a new process. This new process, where previously we had months' notice to go down and evaluate the equipment, spend time down there, climb under equipment, look inside, start it up, any other things. In fact, I think Mr. Scott and others have gone down there as well. The new process doesn't afford us that time. They announce about three days ahead of time that they're gonna allow two days, two half days, for interested parties to come down and take a look, from eight in the morning till noon. That three days' notice doesn't give us time to do anything. Historically, we've come back to the board, once we've selected equipment, got the board to approve it. The only thing I can think of that we can do going forward, if the board would entertain this, would be go ahead and authorize your staff to make the purchases that have already been approved in the budget. Budget numbers are approved way in advance of the time that Sarasota County would announce that they're going to let us come look at this stuff and, you know, place our bids. When we place a bid, I mean, we're not going down there to make a purchase, when we place our bid, we then have to wait for them to take it to their board. Oftentimes, we're competing with other counties as well. In fact, I think in the past year, we had attempted to purchase a great all, a used great all that they had, and we placed a bid on that, and they elected to allow it, another county, to have the great all that we needed. In any event, this has created a situation that we haven't experienced before, it's something new, they've just started, and I'd like to have the board participate in a solution to this dilemma that we find ourselves in now.
Currently, we budget inform them in our budget, budget hearings and our budget process, and historically, I mean, since I've been on the board, I've never seen a commissioner go down and take a look at it. Staff recommendations is what we base the decisions on. So I really don't see a difference if, once we've approved the funding and the amount per.
The difference is that it just doesn't fit under the standard purchasing policy. You can make an exception for these particular items and limit it, you know, to that. You know, from a standpoint of being able to commit the board, you know, if it's within the budget, budget for what they have, and you've already seen all of that, you know, you can go ahead, and you're really just giving more of an administrative or ministerial task, you know, to them to purchase the equipment, up to the point of what the budget would be.
I'm not, I wasn't suggesting a, a policy change on the purchasing policy, but if we've approved the purchase of, say, two pickup trucks for 15,000 apiece, once we've made that approval, can't, if they're going to Sarasota County to look for them, can't, if they only got two days, they can't take our blessing with them when they go then? Is that what?
Oh, no, sir, you can do that. I was, I was thinking more along the lines, and maybe I was thinking ahead, that all of a sudden, on July ninth, right after your, your next meeting, they get a three-day notice, you haven't talked about anything on, you know, purchasing down there.
Right.
Or what would be available. But then, you can give them ahead of time that authority to go ahead and do that, after they make the purchase, as long as it's within the budgetary, you know, the budget that's already been approved, then you come back and you'd ratify the purchase.
Right.
Of what they did.
Yeah, I was just, the way I was thinking of it is, if, if, if we've approved it in the budget, at, at the adoption of the budget. at the adoption of the budget or that meeting, that we go ahead and give them the authorization to make those purchases when those auctions come available.
Yes, sir. This is really not unusual in other counties that have larger budgets that don't worry about, you know, purchasing an individual truck here or an individual truck there. It's not something that's out of the ordinary. It's just out of the ordinary for us. It's just something a little different, that's all.
Well, it's not that we're allowing them to purchase a truck here or there. I mean, we're budgeting. It's vetted during the budget process. It's money that we've already allocated to spend on a truck. It's just the process we're going through in which we're going to purchase it.
Mr. Chairman, just for a little more clarification, I'll just say, I'll give you another example. We have budgeted in the past as well for a used van for an inmate crew that we could not find. In that particular case, we found one on a used car lot somewhere that met our needs. In that case, unlike purchasing surplus from another government entity, we did come to the board and had the board declare that a sole source before we made the purchase because it was a commercial entity. I'm speaking of something entirely different here. This is a situation where we'd be purchasing from another government entity, which is actually already covered under the statute as well.
Yeah, we're just taking that a step. A step where you come before the board and we approve the purchase.
Yes, sir. Like I said, it's not really required, but it's something that y'all have historically done. And so I think it's more informational, you know, to make you aware, to try to keep you, you know, in line. I mean, in line of knowing what's going on, not that it's out of the ordinary, except for y'all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question for Ms. Pratt. Ms. Pratt, does this in any way, dealing with equipment purchases and vehicle purchases, obviously those types of things, would this in any way set a precedent for other budgeted items that would normally come before the board to be done, purchase that discretion that have already been?
You have your purchasing policy that gives the department heads, you know, from, you know, whatever levels they are, proceeding up to, you know, Mr. Harris's level of purchasing power, to be able to make those purchases anyway, and then they get ratified by the board afterwards. Typically, they know about it ahead of time and they bring it to you to approve it, you know? Now, I think, if I'm understanding it correctly, for this particular item, they want to go out, just in case it happens, that they can go ahead and make those purchases of equipment that are already budgeted for, that you already know from this last budget cycle that they're going to be purchased. And, you know, without just doing our routine of coming in and telling you ahead of time, but making you aware that this can happen and that afterwards, you'll just have to ratify that purchase.
Most of the acquisitions also show up, that do show up on the agenda, show up on the consent agenda. I don't recall one ever being pulled, to be honest with you. But that's where they would show up traditionally, once it's a budgeted item. If we purchase something, for instance, off a sheriff's association contract, it's going to show up later on the consent agenda. But this is just, has more to do with us purchasing equipment that someone else, that another county has surplus.
Yeah, I mean.
And trying to comply with their policy.
The only thing that I worry about or am concerned about is that the perception of some in our community that the purchasing power of the administrator is greater than that of, than it should be. And to them, I say that I don't accept it. I think that Mr. Harris has done a great job, but the places from which he purchases, some would say that are friends and buddies. And to that, I disagree so far from what I've learned. I just don't want it to be this action that we take put him in that position of even more accusations, as unfounded as they may be. Because it'd be in his discretion at that point.
Yeah, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's always been from other government bodies, correct?
On the surplus equipment?
Yeah, well, what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, yeah. From the surplus equipment side, it's always been other government entity, except for that occasion where we bought the van. There may have been a pickup truck at some point, but I know there was one. What I do remember is one.
But when it's in that nature, it has to come back as sole source. We have to approve them as a sole source. I'm talking about the auctions that we go to or.
Those have been government entities.
Government entities. So, I mean.
And none of those government entities have been Marion County.
I've been on the board about all I can think of has been Sarasota. And typically, when it's a certain county like that, it's, they have a different policy on the way they rotate their equipment in and out than we do. We get something, we wear it out until it has nothing but scrap value. They try to rotate theirs in and out while it still has some resale value.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, if we could, if we give, we grant the administrator that leniency based on our budget approval in the first place to the extent that he has to use it. If he doesn't have to use it, it can always come back and say, hey, listen, we've got a, we need a truck. We've got several places we're looking. And, you know, what do you want to do? What does the board want to do at that point as far as where to purchase it? That way, it looks like at least the board is making that decision and not one person.
We're not going to make a decision on it tonight. I've just, I think Mr. Harris should bring it to us first, our thoughts, and give him a little bit of direction on how to go. So I'm fine with if we want to come up with something, Mr. Harris.
I'm just going to bring it back on the next agenda, just ask you all to go ahead and authorize us to do it. It isn't unlike what I did months back where I came in and asked you to go ahead and authorize us to bid any number of issues that had already been authorized in the budget so that we didn't have to keep coming back and asking for permission a second time. Ultimately, the question becomes, how many times do you need to be authorized? So I'll bring it back on the next agenda. Mr. Chairman, I did want to make certain and clarify something, though. That additional item where we spoke with the parking lot, you know, it said approval of payment on here. I want to emphasize that I'd like for finance to understand that actually means release of the check. Sometimes we take action and then those checks, once written later, if they don't fall into the appropriate timeline, will be held then until your next board meeting and you approve payment of invoices before they go out. This one, it was written up so that it was approval of the actual payment. And that's what I was requesting, not only that we would take the payment from the contingency fund and be reimbursed later, but.
Go ahead and release the check.
That check would be released now.
Was that all you had?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to item 20, board members' requests and comments. Started here in District 1. Mr. Hale, you have anything?
No, not really. Just went to the Blueberry Festival this weekend. It was very hot, but very fun. So really enjoyed it.
Mr. Sessions?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. If you can indulge me just for a moment, I'm going to read this. That way I can get it out right exactly and I don't have it too much. In the past, several times, the Board of County Commissioners has considered adopting an ordinance for either weight restrictions, truck restrictions on certain roads in our county. Each time, the Board has failed to agree. And I believe the time has come once again to address this issue. Tonight, I would simply like to say that as pro-agriculture as I am, we have several residential roads where no farms exist, yet are still being used for access to main roads. And I believe that we address the needs of our agriculture community by paving roads that meet farm-to-market standards. And we have an ample amount of these roads in our county. And where we don't, we do allow for those that access. However, our residents, those in particular who have purchased smaller parcels and subdivisions, whether their roads are paved or unpaved, should be able to expect a higher level of safety and convenience in their neighborhoods than they are currently receiving by us when we continually allow for heavy truck traffic on these smaller roads. This traffic puts children playing at an unnecessary risk as well as people pulling in and out of their driveways. And when it is dry, it creates an inordinate amount of dust for the residents, all for the sake of saving a little time. This traffic also keeps our grader operators and our truck drivers tied up repairing sand pits and other problems, taking them away from other projects and regular grading schedules and putting an extra burden on our budget. Additionally, we can, as we consider the chip seal program, I believe these trucks will tax our ability and resources to repair, continually repair these roads. As we consider the future of chip seal in Swanee County, as we grow and invite more people to live and love our beautiful, peaceful communities, I believe we must first address these types of concerns, not only to protect our citizens and their families, but also to protect our county resources. This is the fair thing to do for everyone. Therefore, over the next several weeks, I'll be working with Mr. Pravat and Mr. Harris in crafting an ordinance for the board to consider. I look forward to your input and debate. I really believe that we have a board here who will unite and is united so that we can tackle this issue for the citizens of Swanee County. And that's it.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
All I have is, once again, went to the Memorial Day Festivals Celebration and the American Legion and others that participated in it did an excellent job as they always do. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Move to adjourn.
Nothing else? Got a motion to adjourn? Second.
Second.
Thank you all for coming out.